We will appoint Melissa to serve for Mike. And Mr. Secretary, can you read the call through the public hearing? Page 20 dash 04.
Actually, I can't. I don't have it in front of me. No, I don't have, I don't have access to it because I'm.
I have it in front of me. It's
Okay.
Page 20 dash 04 of Louis Chase, Louis Case applicant, Susan and the estate of Wesley Case owner for a zone change from I-1 to R-15 for the premises located at 32 and 34 Hopkins Road,
Yes.
Hoskins Road, Zone I-1. Okay. Um, Mike, who's speaking for the applicant?
Uh, Mr. Case, are you on tonight?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So I'll turn the floor over to you, Lou.
Very good. Well, Wesley Case passed away last year. Or it was the year before last. And we're interested in selling his property. As we're getting the property appraised, we kept on getting the word from the realtors that new buyers aren't really interested in one and a half acre property worth 700 feet deep by 100 feet wide. The neighboring houses on the road are on a quarter acre and they sit nicely. And so, so be it that my nephew, Wesley Case's grandson, is interested in the property. Sure enough, he's a younger buyer and sure enough, he didn't want the back part of the property. He was looking for the house on maybe half an acre. Well, 32 Hoskins Road happens to be, happens to belong to my first cousin Suzanne. And she came the rescue saying that she would take the back part of the property to hers. That way we keep continuity with the group of property that we have there on the road. Plus, it would have been a landlocked piece. It really wouldn't be able to get rid of it anyway. So she may not have lost the property.
Okay.
Uh, so the properties are both I-1. Now, I believe it was industrial 1. In order to make that kind of a change, you cut off the back back acre and resell that to Suzanne at 32, we need to be R-15. Apparently, we can't deal with small, a lot, small lot changes like that in I-1.
Okay. Uh, any commissioners have questions of the applicant?
Oh, I have a couple. I don't know if somebody else wants to go first, but if not, my question, maybe it's more for Mike. I'm, I look at the requirements associated with the I-1 and the R-15 zone relative to the setbacks and the frontage and side yard requirements. And I have some concerns about these two lots and the notion that we should, we should just, you know, change the zone. And I'm wondering about our latitude here and where the zoning board of appeals place might be. And, and most directly, as I see in the chart that's in our regulations, R-15 requires 100 feet of frontage. And while it's not easy to read what we have for plans because of the size and stuff, but the frontage on that on number 32 is 99 point something feet. And it's not that I, I feel compelled to be, you know, a stickler about this, but 99 point something's not 100 feet. And so I, my question is, do we have latitude? If we were otherwise inclined to go forward with creation of a non-conforming zone, a non-conforming lot by approving the change to R-15? It's fine the way it is as long as it's I-1. My recollection, in fact, is there is no funded frontage requirement for I-1. So it's in compliance, but it's short slightly to meet the current requirement. And so my question is, do we have latitude? And, you know, I, I don't remember seeing anything in the zoning regulations, but I don't remember the last time we had an application to create a line change, uh, to approve a line, property line change that would, in fact, contribute to the non-conforming lot. Actually, it isn't the line change. It's the zone change.
So, so the lot is already non-conforming because a single family home is not allowed in the industrial zone. Sorry, being used for a non-conforming use. The other thing is Mr. Case noted when he wants to do the combination with the other parcel. Um, he has corrected the minimum lot size is required at 10 acres. As for the frontage, what you have before you is a Class D survey. It is not a survey of the actual property. Um, it's based on other informations. Um, it's, it's not accurate in the sense like an A, a Class A2 survey, which would be within one one hundredth of an inch accuracy. So I, I wouldn't hang my hat on saying that it, it meets or it does not meet the frontage requirements for the zoning district based on survey data because you don't, you don't have a survey. You have a, it's basically a complication, a complication map. So like I said, it's kind of like a GIS block plan. It's a guesstimate of dimensions of the lot. Um, but it's not A2, A2 quality. Um, I think the bigger issue here is the fact that you have a, you have a parcel that's being used uh, for residential purposes in an industrial zone, which like I said, is not permitted. So
Your parcel is being used for residential purposes in an industrial zone.
This is what gets, it gets tricky with that for the fact that, um, you know, you don't really want to promote the, this would, this, you don't want to promote the, the non-conformity and, and changing the zoning district would bring this, the use of this property into compliance with the current regulations. Uh, does that help, Bruce?
Okay.
Uh, no, that sounds like a fairly sort of obtuse answer to, are you suggesting that we don't have an obligation to go by the map that was submitted by the applicant? We can make some assumption that it's not quite accurate. I'm not suggesting I wouldn't go along with that, but I'm looking for, you know, an understanding. So when we see it again and the next time the dimension's off by two or three feet, we say, well, you know, it's not a, a map that we have to rely on. So where do you get the, the sort of the, you know, the, a valid assertion about the frontage? Or are you saying it doesn't matter?
I'm, I'm saying, well, you're not creating a lot so that that frontage is going to apply if you were creating a lot. Um, and I'm saying that to the, to not go by the dimensions on the map or the fact that it's a Class D, it's just a level of accuracy on that map. Because it's a complication map. It's based on other data. It's not actually live survey data. Um, if Mr. Case had the lot surveyed to a Class A2, you know, that may result in showing that he has 110 feet of frontage versus the 90 plus that was shown. I, I don't, I, I wouldn't, I'm not really, could, like I said, because it's a Class D, the, the comment would be is this is a bigger conversation probably outside of this application with the commission is, do you, you know, in, in the reg updates, do we want to say you want to have an A2 survey for a zone change application? You allow the submittal of Class Bs. So this is, this is kind of when you've used Class Bs, this is the level of accuracy that you get.
So, so your, your recommendation is that the commission accept uh, this application as present, as meeting the 100 foot standard? As insufficient, sufficient compliance with the 100 foot standard?
Okay.
It's in compliance with.
Come on, we're, we're splitting hairs here on something that I think is, is really a moot point. Do you have another question, Bruce?
Uh, no, I, that was really my, my more significant issue. And I recognize that others aren't particularly interested in the minor points here, but we'll see this again at some point and somebody will have the same question.
Okay. Any other comments from other commissioners? Ken?
I would just say that it brings it more into compliance with the neighbors. Um, the I-1 really isn't being used in that area as an I-1. And so I'd rather see it as residential than I-1.
That seemingly, seems to be all the same family, actually.
But even the neighbors, when you go up the street, they're all R-15s and across the street. And then behind them now, I, I don't know, are they still I-1? No, they're the, uh,
That's the housing.
The housing zone, yeah. So
Yeah.
The R-15.
Cambridge Court.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there anyone? Do we have any quick comments, Mike? Did anybody send anything in?
No, we did not receive any public comment on this application. And I just want to note for the record that this was reviewed by the planning commission and they found it consistent with the plan of conservation and development.
Good, good.
And that, did that apply both to the zone change and the property line change?
That's correct. Well, it really, the zone change is what they, they were looking at, not the property line exchange. That's, that's more a function of the zoning, of the zoning commission.
Okay. Any further comments or questions of the applicant?
No.
Do you hear a motion to close the public hearing?
I move that we close the public hearing to application, uh, I lost it already.
2004.
2004.
I'll second.
Second by Kevin. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Any opposed? The carry is six, nothing. So the public hearing is closed. Now we have a second public hearing. Kevin? Mr. Secretary, may I read for you? Application 20 dash 05 of Kevin Farley, owner applicant for a special exception and site plan approval to allow for change to a full liquor license permit and an approval for a construction of a patio, outdoor dining for the premises located in 1616 Hopmeton Street, Zone V1. Okay. Is the applicant, Mike?
I'm here.
Okay, Kevin. Can you tell us what you're doing? I, I think we know, but.
Yes, I'm, uh, taking over Tai Ocho and turning into a comfort food place, kind of appetizers, salads, sandwiches and small plates. Um, little small bar, about 10 seat bar. And eventually next year, if things go well, I'd to kind of build some kind of patio in the back uh, of the building. Whatever, you know, it's nothing, nothing great, nothing grand scheme, but I'm looking for a liquor license. Right now they had a beer and wine only. I'm looking for a liquor. And so then I'm looking for a permit for inside a patio and patio extension.
Okay. Are there questions from the commission?
Well, let me start with one. Oh, somebody else. Kevin, were you gonna have something?
Kevin's gonna ask whether the, uh, does the patio exist now? And then second to that, is it included in the liquor license?
Right now it does not exist, but with my liquor license, I apply for a patio, a patio liquor license and extended, kind of like, uh, if I was to do events back there, kind of fencing something off, it's a patio extension. So that's what is it? Right now there's no deck. Let's eventually put one on there, but I just want to get the inside done first and get it going before we kind of, if we want to do that down the road, I'd like to have that out there before. You know?
Okay, I'm, I'm just wondering if it's chicken and the egg here because do you have to have approval from us to go to the liquor license, the liquor commission to get approval for an outdoor dining when you don't have the outdoor dining approved by the liquor, by zoning commission?
Well, the thing is I want to get everything in all at one. Like eventually I want to put a patio on, once I start making money, I'll put a patio out the next year, but I want to get everything in my liquor guys. If you get everything down in one spot, you'll, you'll have to wait for it down the road. You get everything in one shot.
Right. I thought one of the diagrams did have a a patio drawn in, right?
Yeah, I did that.
Okay. Well, I guess in our pool, we should consider that part of the um, where you're approved so that you don't have a two-step. You don't want to come into us this year, not get approval for that and then have to come back again, you know? We just want to do it all at once.
Correct.
Okay. Any, any other questions from the commission, Bruce?
Yes, um, I'm, I'm looking at the application which, uh, you know, is written as, um, change in liquor license, full liquor from, uh, it says change in liquor license, full liquor from beer and wine and approval for construction of the outdoor dining and patio. And then when I look at the other document we were given, that's called an application for on-premise liquor permit. There's an indication here in block number eight where it says, is there currently a liquor permit at the proposed premises? And the block no is checked there. So I, I'm confused if we're upgrading from the current beer and wine license to the uh, liquor, full liquor permit. Uh, how could you answer question number eight as no, there's no permit on the premises?
It's only beer and wine, it's no liquor. So it's not liquor. It's only a beer and wine permit.
Oh, 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 okay. Well, that makes, that's a good explanation.
You beat me to it, Kevin.
And, uh, let me just, you know, I, I've, I'm interested in, uh, I guess whether you have some, some intentions relative to noise containment for the live entertainment you, you anticipate having in that outdoor space?
Well, I really don't plan, and I say live entertainment all the time. This is down the road. I don't really want entertainment right now. Um, if there would be, to be speakers out there, if there was some kind of music, but I would go around to the neighbors in the back and tell them, hey, this was going on. If there's a problem, then I could change it because I don't want to be that kind of neighbor, but I'm not looking for big bands back there. If I was to do a some kind of fundraiser or something like that, I would definitely, you know, tell neighbors, hey, be a daytime thing. Would be never be nighttime. I'm not looking for a late night bar at all.
Okay. And, um,
Bruce, I think that we are going to consider a site plan amendment for the, um, patio. And I think that's a time to maybe put a constraint on the time of use.
I, I think that's a good idea. It's not clear though, that, uh, that was the applicant's intent to submit a later site plan amendment. I don't object to it because I think it solves the problem of these diagrams that are not all that helpful. The, the survey that was submitted that's dated 1986 and not updated since, plus this sketch that's done with no dimensions. So a site plan amendment might be a good suggestion. I'm, I'm looking for some sort of railings around this thing. And the question of whether there's going to be a gate that somehow supervises entrance and exit that's for emergencies only or something.
He's asking for a site plan amendment here, I believe.
Yeah.
So, um, in
Oh, that, these diagrams, those documents are, it's suggested that they comprise a site plan amendment. Is that correct?
Mike?
That's correct. What he submitted for his site, he submitted this for his site plan approval along with the liquor license. Liquor control will require barriers and gates basically to permit to corral, uh, patrons into the outdoor area and not allow for kind of open access from, from all sides. That's something that liquor control does regulate and deal with.
Okay. Melissa, you got a question?
I do. So I know that on the patio and extension, extended use application for the liquor control, you do have to submit a sketch of everything on the outside. So if this is not the sketch that is going to the liquor control, then shouldn't we be acting on a site plan amendment that is actually going, will be seen by the liquor control because we're putting our signature on it that we've approved it already. But if we don't see it, we can't approve it.
Any other comments?
Who, me? Um, I'm looking for like, for right now, what my liquor guy says, we, I mean, they just want a floor plan of what it's going to be, like where the area is. They're not, right now they're not looking for the railings, this and that. It's, it's just not built yet. Once the site, once we decide to do it, then I show them the plans. Right now I don't have anything. It'd just be inside for liquor. The outside, this is for, like I said, the safe steps down the road to get the patio and the extended patio. So for right now, my, my gentleman who's helped me out says I just need a diagram of where the patio is going to be and this diagram of the outline of the building of the, you know, the square footage. Not looking for, you know, what the patio is going to look like and gates, like Mike said, that we, we'll have that eventually. But right now I just need to show them where it will be at. So when I do do the patio, we have, you know, we have the liquor license and show where it is.
It seems to me though, that, that it doesn't have any dimensions on the site plan. Now, Mike, is that not acceptable?
There's dimensions.
There's, yeah, I believe there is. Hold on. Liquor control is going to want a little more information. What, what I would suggest maybe is this, is we can, you, you could act on the special exception for the liquor license. And then Kevin, you're going to have to come back with more details. Kevin, the applicant, not Kevin Gray. More details on dimensions of the, the proposed patio, any barrier system around it, whether it's fencing or other, other options uh, that kind of to, to, uh, address with, you know, corralling people in that area. Along with any substantive changes like access to the area from the interior of the site. I think what, what the applicant's looking for is minimum his, the okay for the liquor license and the ability to submit. Um, and as he kind of indicated, he's not going to look to build this patio for a year. So I think that maybe we could say, we could, I'm just suggesting this, the commission can decide and say, we can approve your special exception. However, the construction of the patio, you need to come back to the commission for.
That's fine. If I just get the one for the building, that's fine. And then next, I'll do the next step, which, which won't be a problem.
Although with the current restriction on, on dining, you might want that outdoor dining sooner rather than later.
Right.
Well, the thing is like, I can't use my, I mean, I don't have the money to build it this year. I have no money. Every dime I have is into this, what I have right now. Plus, use the parking lot, the first six spots. That'd be my patio, but I can't do that. So I can't do anything on the grassy knoll behind us. That's, that's not up to standard. So that's the only way I can do is if I do a patio in the first five, six spots of my, of my lot for a patio and put some tables and chairs and mark it off. But right now I can't put a patio out there. It'll only be for the inside pretty much. So if I could serve outside on the, on my sidewalk or in those spots, then I would do the patio that way, but I can't do that, anything of that.
Okay. Well, we, anybody, anybody have more questions on the special exception part, which is the liquor? Kind of the liquor, uh, beer and wine.
I guess I do have one more question, Dave, and that is, uh, if the applicant would serve outside on the patio, if he had the patio extended use permit done, would you want to do that? I mean, would you like to present the patio I, in the parking area to us? And we could approve that temporarily, that until you come back for the full patio in the back?
Yeah, I mean, I just, uh, I mean, I didn't know that. I was going to ask that question tonight if I can use, do that. See if I have, I only have 11 tables inside. If I put five inside and six outside or something like that, I don't know. You know, how we do that, but I didn't know if that would be a different way. So I don't know how we go about that just to get, say my liquor, I mean, do I just do a, submit a new thing with my parking lot and say here? But I don't know. I'm just trying to get my, you know.
I think we've got a situation now that, that everybody's closed. There's some discussion that's going to go on later on tonight on, uh, how we deal with, uh, temporary outdoor service of things. And I, I think what we need to do is to consider his liquor change application and decide on that. And then his patio thing that he's talking about building something, he needs to come back with more definitive stuff. But furthermore, there may be some options that are available on a temporary basis that we will discuss later on tonight. So now that we've muddied it all up totally, anybody got any more questions on the liquor?
No, but just remind me, Davis, the next issue, the question of closing the public hearing?
Yes.
On these items. Okay. Well, let me offer a thought. I'm not questioning further the applicant, but a thought before we close the hearings, that, um, I think there's, there's, you know, good reason for support of both of these applications, but I, I feel personally like the liquor license is in my mind, good to go. Um, but the application for the patio construction is, is well short of the kind of information that we should have and that Melissa described that the liquor commission is likely to expect. My thought is that what if we left the public hearing open on the construction of the patio till the next meeting?
Uh, the public hearing
Give them time to bring in.
Bruce, excuse me. Public hearing is not for the patio. That's a site plan amendment. This doesn't require public hearing. So we're only worried about
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think everybody's in agreement with
The application is for both.
Okay.
It only has one application number.
Yeah, there's only one.
I guess it, it's not two applications.
Yes, but we can discuss the application after we close the public hearing.
If we close the public hearing, we can't reopen it without notice.
We can't talk about any of it.
Well, I think the public hearing has to do with, uh, the liquor.
Yeah, the public hearing is, is specific to the liquor, uh, liquor change and liquor license application. Um, you, you could, I mean, you could do it either way. You can close the, you can close the hearing tonight, which probably it sounds like based on everyone's comments, directly related to the liquor license, that you're comfortable with it. I'm not, I don't mean to be put words on anyone's mouth, but um, the site plan amend, the site plan application, obviously there are, there are details missing that the applicant is aware of and he's willing to work on. Um, I think, I think, you know, you can act on the special exception tonight and he just have to come back with more information for the site plan approval. And in any motion to approve, um, we could talk about that once the public hearing is closed.
Okay.
Can I just ask one question?
Sure.
So is, is, are we able to approve this, the exception for the, the liquor license for outdoors as well if he does not have an approved patio?
You, you can grant
The liquor, the liquor permit, this liquor commission just needs to know where the, the dimensions of it. They don't, like I said, they don't need to know of what it's going to be. That's on the, for the town, for the site, for me to build it. As long as they know the dimensions and I do put, okay, exit here and entrance there, that's fine for them. They're not looking for the construction part of being safe. They just want to know the dimensions of it. And that's where it is. On your end is just, can we, it's you saying, okay, we can get the liquor permit for the patio. So down the road, it's already there, but we, I have to go through you in order to okay it. I gotta go through the town in order to okay the patio.
So we're good with that then? We would do it that way and then ask for a site plan when the patio went in?
Yes.
Specific to the patio construction.
Okay.
Oh.
Yep. Because what you would do, what will you do is, is by granting this special exception for the liquor license, you're, you're basically establishing the premises, the site, meaning indoor/outdoor, which is what Kevin needs in order to apply for his permits. The, the, the details on the actual physical construction, he, we, I would say that he needs to come back with a more detailed site plan than what's submitted.
So just to be clear, we're not, if we vote to approve this, we're not voting to approve the, we're not, we're not giving him the approval. He would need to go back to get the patio extended use. License from the liquor control later on. We'll have to go through that step later, correct?
No, this would, this would mean if you approve the, the change to liquor license and, and, and give him the premises indoor/outdoor, it means that he doesn't have to come back through a public hearing process with us. All he'd have to come back to us is for an administrative site plan approval for the physical construction of the patio of which, you know, those, that's the prints that he would submit with his application for, uh, extension of use for the patio. Because liquor control is not going to approve the use of a patio that's not constructed. Because that's the other thing. It's kind of like, we're, basically he's, we're saving him two public hearings. If we were to say, sign off on, say, give, grant him a permit for our indoor/outdoor for liquor consumption. And then he'd be back here with more details on the actual physical construction of the patio at a later date.
And a related question. Again, back to the application for on, on premises liquor permit, the liquor commission's application. Block number nine has the word patio and then a question mark. And then in parenthesis, it says, if yes, complete attached patio request form. And then below it, there is a block yes and a block no. And the block no is, is checked. I, I don't, I don't understand that being consistent with any concept that, that submitting this document is going to get some sort of approval for a patio license. You know, outdoor liquor permit stuff. The patio, it says right on this document, it says no. So I'm not sure what, what that exactly that means in relation to the dialogue you know, we've had here in the last 15 minutes.
I'm just not convinced that what we're doing today would not need to be, be done. And I, I can't say whether we would need a public hearing or not. But I know that the liquor application for patio extended use includes a provision that specifically requires zoning approval on that particular application. So I'm just, I just don't want to mislead the applicant by thinking that he's all done here for when he actually does build the patio and apply for that, that license from the liquor board.
Yeah, with, with the extended patio, with the patio, you said, I know I have to give a site plan of what's, what's being marked out. The town has to sign off it. The health department has to find out. I think the farmer should have signed off it also. If I do an event. So I understand that whole gamut is that if, if I want to use extended, extended patio, I would have to get through the town, the town okay to do it. I understand that. It's just for the patio I'm looking for and that's it.
And so another scenario, what if you come back in two weeks with a plan for the patio? You don't have to build that right away. But you would have the plan for it already approved and do it as one deal instead of coming in twice.
Like I said, not like, right now I'm not looking, I don't know what the, the dimension would be thirty. I don't even know how I'm going to build that. I don't know. Because right now I don't know the exact thing I want to build it, how high, you know, all the, I don't have that right now in my, in my.
In your head, okay.
My punch list per se. I'm just trying to get, you know, the kitchen built, things painted, this and that. So it's just that in order for me to build this, and I'm looking next year, because I don't know what's going to go on with the COVID stuff. So I'm not even looking for that right now. That's money I don't have to build. So definitely would be down the road to, to gain, to get some money and hopefully build it next year.
All right. I was just trying to save you another application fee.
Well, I mean, I figured this, I thought this was the same like a patio, because when I was filled it out, they, he had told me that was the patio and the indoor to do both. The extended is different. I just thought maybe kill two birds with one stone. Okay. So I want to say, what if I, like she said, down below is that if I want to go on the front, say my front sidewalk per se down there, that would be part of the patio. So to send me come back for the patio, I have the patio and indoor now.
That, that step down's in the front of the building, not the back of the building, right?
The, the steps will go down to the grass, but I do have, you know, the front of the building has that little sidewalk and a step. So those first, say first five, six spots, I can probably block off like some kind, block them off some way and just put some tables out there, six feet apart, whatever, just to get some business on, in there so that it's marked off and orange fencing or whatever. So people don't leave.
Yeah. I, I know you're going to have to have a more substantial plan than that to get support from this commission. So at least for some of us, but you know.
Yeah.
I wish you luck. I mean, I hope your restaurant's very successful.
Appreciate it.
I mean, I just do think that even without the planned proposed patio in the back, it would be possible for this board, if there were a more substantial sketch of what you would do with the front parking lot spaces, it would be possible for us to approve the front parking lot spaces as part of your indoor, outdoor application right now. And you wouldn't need to wait for the exterior back addition that you're talking about. Just an idea, just an idea.
I don't think we can approve parking spaces as outdoor dining in a typical situation, can we? If they're required parking.
I think there's something we can discuss later on this evening.
Right. So I don't know that that should, yeah.
I think what we've got to do is to determine whether or not we can agree that he can apply for a full liquor license from a beer to more. I don't know that we need to say anything about his patio, do we? And that approval.
Well, he's asked for it, so that's why.
That's why I don't pay double the fee for a patio and the thing, you know, I just thought, you know, figured this might just be easier to, you know, to do this, but it's up to you guys.
We are, we are not.
I think, I think.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Just a second. We are not required to approve the application in total. We can approve a part of it and deny a part of it or recommend that he come back. So it's not a case of they have to approve all of this stuff. So I think Mike, as far as the patio is concerned, he has to come back and get a site plan approval from us. And then he has to go back to the liquor commission and ask them or something. Is that not true?
Yeah, he's gonna, or he's gonna have to present the, the actual site plan illustrating the complete build out of the, of the patio to you. And he's got to that, whatever you sign off on is what either myself or Tom Hazel will sign off on, on the liquor license. So he's going to be marching that to liquor control. I think what, the only thing, like I said, I'll go back to it is, you know, you can look at it from the sense of, are you okay with a full liquor license here, indoor, outdoor? If so, it gets him down to only having to sit through one public hearing. Otherwise, what will happen is if you only approve indoor consumption here for the special exception, when he gets his patio plans together, he's going to have to come back to get a special exception for the extension of the use.
Okay. So everybody understand that. That's a point of discussion in the, where we consider the application. Right now we're still in a public hearing.
Okay.
But I think that clarifies it. Any other comments or questions of the applicant?
No.
No, that is.
Do you have any public comments?
None.
No, you did not receive any written comment on this application either.
Okay. And we have members of the public in our Zoom meeting. Anybody want to speak? Okay. I think we're at the point where we can close the public hearing. Somebody want to make that motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing. Twenty dash oh five.
I'll second. I'll second.
Second by Donna. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Both? Okay. So it carries six, nothing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we're on to the next part of our agenda, which is to consider the application to twenty dash oh four, Lewis case for the zone change. It seems like we pretty much, I thought we're in agreement that it was a, a good thing. I don't know. What do you think, Bruce?
Pardon me?
I say you look like you're going to say something.
No, actually, I know the property quite well because I knew Wesley Case for many years through our connection in the American Legion post in Simsbury. He was an active member for 70 years. So everybody who was ever in the Legion in Simsbury knows Wesley Case. And I've been at his house a number of times. So I know the lady.
You have any questions, Donna?
Um, no, a little concerned for the new lot that we're creating with the, the large parcel in the back, but other than that, no. It's fine.
And? Anne, you have any comments? You're muted, I think.
Oh, yes, she is. Anne, we can't hear you.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, we can.
There you go.
Oh, sorry about that.
Is that why you haven't had a chance to be heard? We couldn't hear you.
I, I didn't know I was muted. No, I don't have any questions. Um, I, I, I drove by it today just to see what it was, what it looked like and where it was. You know, that back lot might be an issue, but if, if later on maybe, but right now it doesn't seem to be to me.
Okay. Any others? Melissa, Kevin?
I would just, we didn't receive any comment from Cambridge Crossing about this, did we?
Sorry.
We didn't receive any comment from Cambridge Crossing about this, did we? Because I know that the applicant spoke specifically to wanting to create a buffer with Cambridge Crossing.
Right.
No comment from them?
No, I did speak to the developer at Cambridge Crossing, and he did not seem too concerned with, with the application.
It's really a big hill. I mean, it goes up in the back there. So it does create a buffer. Kevin, any comments?
Nope. Ready for a motion?
Do we, do we have?
I'm sorry. Can I ask Mike just one more question?
Sure.
Mike, is.
Yeah.
Is Cambridge Crossing, is the developer there considered a an interested party in this application?
In the sense he's a budding property owner.
Yeah. I should probably abstain from the vote on this. Can we, okay?
Now we need a motion.
I'll move.
Mike, is there a motion?
Yeah, yeah.
It should be, should be uploaded.
You ready?
Yeah, I can read it off the.
Yeah, I'll read it. I'll move to approve application twenty oh four of Lewis Case applicant, Suzanne Medica trustee and the estate of Wesley Case owners for his zone change from I one to R fifteen for the premises located at thirty two and thirty four Hoskins Road. Zone change approval is subject to the following conditions. Effective date for zone, for change of zoning district is June first, twenty twenty. And to a Mylar, it should be prepared for signature by the chairman and then filed on Simsbury Land Records.
You have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Bruce. More discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Propose? One abstention, correct? Melissa?
Correct.
Five, five, nothing with one abstention. Melissa? Okay. The next application, twenty dash oh five of Kevin Farley for special exception, full site plan approval to allow for change to a full liquor license permit and for construction of an outdoor patio dining area. And I think that we've had a lot of discussion on this. I think the issue is whether the, the commission is willing to entertain a motion to approve his liquor license change for an indoor and outdoor permit or not? Any comments on that?
You know, I'll jump in. I'm not, I mean, I'm, I'm reluctant to approve the outdoor part of it absent any, you know, reasonable drawings that shows what is it, what we'd be approving. And you know, the applicant.
He still needs a site, he still needs a site plan approval by us to use it.
Right. So my, my preference is to, I mean, I'm supportive of approving the liquor permit application, but there just isn't enough meat on the bones for me in terms of his interest in doing something outside the building and looking for us to approve it now at this stage.
This, Bruce, we're not approving what he wants to construct. We're approving the idea that he can serve liquor there once he gets permission to build it. And that saves him a public hearing.
Yeah.
At a later date.
Yeah.
Which is not an inconsequential cost.
Yeah. But Dave, I don't, on the, the only thing I, I'm, I know for sure about a liquor application is what I read on the document that's been given to us to reflect on. And I don't see anywhere the identification of this application is applying to inside and outside the premises, you know, the reference to indoor and outdoor. I guess if I could see that here, I don't know that I'd be more comfortable, but I'd be surprised because I've looked at this thing a number of times. I don't see that.
Okay. Mike? Mike, please?
Is that some category of license that's not? I mean, they, they really don't on the form describe all of the categories of license, but is indoor, outdoor a license?
Where it is, it's, it's so the, so the patio request is called an extension of use. And it's, it's just a, a page addendum to the app, the application itself.
Well, I'm looking at block number nine, right on the front of that. I mean, we only have a one sided document, but it says block number nine patio, no. And yet he, you, somehow there's a notion he's, we're being asked to approve an application for outdoor use and indoor liquor service.
I think as Dave noted earlier, he's coming here to get the one special exception for the liquor use indoor and outdoor to save him a trip back to another public hearing process. But as Dave noted too, you, you have the ability, you can modify the, modify your approval.
Is it possible to approve the outdoor liquor license based on the fact that I think the applicant represented that he was able to use, I think it was six parking spaces for an outdoor patio? And he could do that right now without any construction or anything of, of that kind. Just trying to find ways to avoid the other public hearing for him. He would still have to get the site plan approval if he wanted to add the deck and do the substantial site in the back. But that wouldn't require a public hearing for any hearing.
Well, I, I don't know how many of us would remember when the, the little tavern that's down there near the former Cannon Office Building, Medical Office Building, the little tavern that's in the courtyard. I forget the name of it. But when he came along with the same idea after he opened it and he wanted to take some parking spaces when he felt like there would be sufficient business and put some temporary barriers out there so that he could have corded off, cordoned off seating in the parking lot. And then at the end, at closing of business, he would roll in the barrels and the, the chain link, plastic chain link or whatever he was using for a barrier. I don't really picture it very clearly, but I remember the topic. And we, we approved something for him that I don't know if he's still doing it like that, but he went right out there in a very small parking area and he was using maybe three or four spots for temporary, you know, seating that was set up and taken down, set up and taken down. And maybe this applicant, if he would do some research in the neighborhood and in town for these places that already have outdoor, you know, temporary and long term outdoor, you know, year round seating. He could quickly get an idea of what it is he really wants to articulate, even though he's talking about not building it right away. At least he could describe what it is he wants approval with some detail.
Okay. What do other people think? Donna?
Well, I'd just be interested to see what the applicant, how he would feel if this is going to become an issue, whether we just want to give him his, his liquor permit for the restaurant so he can just get going, whether that, you know, if we're going to be holding this up because of this outdoor patio, you know, what the balance is there for him?
Well, we're not in a public hearing anymore.
Right. Well, we, I think we need to think about that. If he's.
That was, that was a question and, and Mike, anyway, I think I've said enough on this. Anne?
I, I think I would be mostly in favor of giving him just the liquor license for now for the indoor space.
For indoor only?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Kevin?
I, 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 I would have preferred that we were able to defer this so that he could actually come back with a plan. Because otherwise he's going to have to come back for two public hearings. And so I don't know that we're really doing on the service.
That's a good point.
Okay.
Well, my, 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 Mike thinks we can actually approve an outdoor patio without a liquor license for an outdoor patio without any concept of what the outdoor patio is?
No, it's indoor and outdoor service, what we're approving, not, not any place.
You can approve the use, just not the physical construction.
All right, if we can do that.
The special exception could be specific to that. And then I would say, uh, put a condition in there that construction of the patio requires site plan amendment and that's it. That would get him, so it avoids a second public hearing. And it would get, he now knows what information he needs to add. And it would get, he now knows what information he needs to add to the plans for this, for the patio. And it could expedite the matter, although it would have been.
Okay, Melissa, you got a comment?
No, I just lost Mike. I just lost his audio.
Yes, so did I.
Yeah, I did too.
Do you have me now?
Yes.
Okay, so you could, I'll get back to it. So you can approve the special exception for the use and basically say a site plan amendment is required for physical construction of the patio, please come back. It eliminates the need to come back through a public hearing process because the use has been established and the special exception would be filed on land records and therefore active. That saves him through a public hearing, an additional public hearing for this. And based on the comments given by the commission, it probably got his, now he gives him the ideas of what he needs to do for information to add to the plans in order to submit for the site plan amendment for the patio. And staff will be reaching out to him after the meeting to assist in developing a fuller set of plans for this.
Okay, also remember that I don't think he has the money to spend at this point on getting some people to go off plans. So I think deferring it isn't going to help.
Question?
Yeah.
Just for the applicant's benefit, for clarification, if we were to follow Mike's idea outlined above and approve the outdoor use at this time, although he would have to come back if he wanted to construct the patio in the back, would he have to come back to use those front parking spaces since there's nothing to approve in terms of a site plan now that he has, if he were to have the indoor/outdoor use? Just for, just so he knows what the steps are?
He couldn't use them because they're parking.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, that would require a site plan as well.
Thank you.
I think though, are we talking about a motion that is, has some specific language that while we're endorsing for liquor license to service both indoor and outdoor, that the outdoor segment of it is prohibited until there's a site plan approved for the expansion of the premises?
That's what I would go for.
Service.
Basically.
I would, I would too.
I would go for that.
Now, if he gets that liquor license and then sells the restaurant, you know, November, say, and hasn't built the, then the right to build the, you know, to have the liquor license doesn't pass to the new owner, they have to apply for their own, is that right, Mike?
So the liquor license with the state of Connecticut would not pass to the, to the new owner? They'd have to go through the process. As for your commission, however, because it's a special exception that's filed on the land records, once you say yes to it, it's forever. Meaning it would be a full liquor license to this site along with the potential of a patio. And I'll say the potential because obviously my idea would be if you've approved the use, not the physical construction.
So they still couldn't do it until we get the patio permit or the outdoor construction permit, site, I mean, site plan.
That is correct.
Right, but in a sense, we don't know who's going to be the successor owner of the authorization we're contemplating giving. Once it goes on the land, it goes to any, anybody who buys the property.
That means that can be, that's the whole point, it can be used for liquor service. But it can't be used, the outdoor part of it can't be used until a site plan approval approves it.
That's correct.
Anyway, so you guys are okay with that, with someone?
Well, I'm, I'm, I would support that, I need to think about it another minute, but I would support it if the language of the motion is clear, that that outdoor use is prohibited until we approve a site plan describing the facility to our satisfaction, that would, you know, be the area of outdoor service. And that, you know, in the, in the, and I'm also relying on the description that there's a license category called indoor and outdoor license. And that's what I think Mike described and that's what we're authorizing him to apply for, indoor/outdoor license. And then in the same motion, we're prohibiting the outdoor service until there's a satisfactory site plan amendment for the facility changes that are needed to serve outside the existing footprint.
I think we're all in agreement on that. I don't think there's an issue there. Is there anybody? You all seem to be nodding, but. Does someone want to make a motion?
Okay, I'll try. I move to approve application 2005 of Kevin Farley, owner applicant for a special exception as to allow for a change to a full liquor license permit for indoor and patio use for the premises located at 1616 Hot Meadow Street, subject to the following conditions. zoning commission approval of a site plan amendment for the proposed patio outdoor dining.
Is required.
All right. I don't think that it's subject to the approval of that, so I don't know.
Oh, subject, subject.
Well, I'd prefer some more direct language to the fact that the use of the outdoor service is prohibited until we have approval, have approved an appropriate site plan.
That's implicit in what he said.
It's subject to approval of the thing, that means you can't do it without approval.
So I think, I think that says it, Bruce.
No, you. Dan will cover it, that language.
Did someone want to second it?
I'll second it.
Second by Ann. Further discussion? Think you have to be careful of the language you put in, Bruce, because you wouldn't want the liquor authority to say, well, they can't do this and bounces license back and can get him in a catch 22.
Well, I think we're making a valuable accommodation trying to do it like this, so, you know. I'm going to support it. I'm a nice guy, you know. I think we're doing the right thing and hope this restaurant's successful, but, you know, there's a fine line sometimes between doing things because, you know, we're accommodating someone because we like them or we want them to be successful or we feel, you know, some sense of concern versus our regulations. There's a set of regulations we were elected, all of us, to enforce. Those are the administrative responsibilities to administer the code. We don't have the latitude to make new things up. We do, but there's a process that requires public hearing and all. Right now, you know, I'm supportive of the language that Kevin suggested.
Okay, who seconded? Ann seconded it?
I did.
Further more, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Propose? Okay, Carrie, six, nothing. Thank you. I think you'll be fine. Okay, the third item we have is 20-06 of Mike Glidden. I don't know, why is this on here? I don't know. Mike?
So this is, this is on the agenda just because we filed the application. It's been referred to the planning commission and your public hearing will open next meeting. So there's, there's no reason to discuss this tonight.
Okay. All right, the next item is we have a discussion of some ideas for 34 Hot Meadow Street, Infinity, Infinity 4, I guess it is, LL Street, which is Mark Greenberg and I think we've got Rich Korea over here on the left. So you're going to give us a little background on this idea?
So I'll provide the commission a little detail on this. So I've been meeting with some representatives there, potential development. It's for a self-storage facility and a fitness building. We looked at the master plan development and what this proposal shows is a little different than the master plan. It's pushing all the development to the far northeastern corner of the, of the, basically open field between 34 Hot Meadow Street, the former CLMP facility or Curaleaf facility and Chubb Insurance. It's a self-storage facility. I've already said that the uses. One thing that the applicant did in this develop, this plan, this schematic we have is that there, as I said earlier, they're pushing that development closer to the northeastern corner of the property. They're putting in a vegetated berm to shield the view of the development. The total area of development is equivalent to what was approved on the master plan. Really, it's, I want, what we're presenting this to the commission as a preliminary is the feedback from the commission on whether you feel that's a substantial change that triggers a resubmital of the master plan approval or this is consistent with the approved master plan and therefore the applicant will be, start preparing site plan submittals for this construction. The fitness portion, the two, of the two uses here, that's, that's really good, most likely at this point will be phase two. The self-storage is what's going to be phase one right now. And it's, you know, the use, like I said, it's a low intensive use. The other thing the applicant is proposing to do is, it was shown on the master plan that there'd be some shared access with Chubb. However, they're utilizing the primary access to serve these two tenants in the back will be the Chubb driveway. So they're limiting any impact to the intersection of a Hot Meadow and Old Meadow Plain by using this schematic. I put in your, the Dropbox, a copy of the master plan for 34 Hot Meadow Street, if anyone wanted to look at. But really, it's a question for the commission, you know, here, it's a development that's coming forward. Do you feel this is consistent with the master plan? Staff's opinion, based on the intensity scale and they're pushing all the development back. I was thinking it is consistent with the master plan, but I wanted to get some input from the commission.
Mike, can you, I'm now looking at the 34 Hot Meadow Street master plan. Can you reiterate the locations of things?
I'm sorry, Dave, I lost the last sentence, the last word you said.
Tell us again the locations of where the fitness place would be on the property and where the self.
So if you're looking at that master plan, that big, the large brownest box that's kind of up towards the northeastern corner, the Chubb driveway is adjacent to that. It's basically that box and then the other small square that's to the, it would be to the lower right-hand corner of it. That's where all this development will be occurring. So it's, it's, it's in the same general area, but they're pushing it further back and they're putting more an emphasis on landscaping, like I said, with the berm plantings on it so that you can't see what's back there from Route 10. Or it'll shield the view from Route 10.
So is that parcel two?
That's parcel two.
That would be, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, parcel two, I'm sorry, yeah.
Okay, so the very top, top corner of parcel two?
Correct.
Got it.
Which is Curaleaf, is that in parcel two?
Yes, that's, that's, yeah, that's, you scroll further down, going towards the dotted line. That's the buildings that are, that were CLMP ever sourced, that's, that's Curaleaf entirely.
Okay, and what's the closest building above it?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Building that's, that's, that's north of Curaleaf.
That was another, another development site or development pad or building that was shown on the master plan. They're not proposing anything in that area at this point. They're just proposing the, the commercial building, let's, let's call it commercial, but the fitness facility and self-storage. That's, that's later down the road.
How do the square footages of the proposed new things compare to what's on that drawing?
We're in the same ballpark on square footage. Based on the discussions I've had with the applicants, the numbers that were provided. We are, we are, we're not increasing the overall commercial square footage than what was approved in the master plan for total area.
How about the parking?
Parking, actually with the self-storage, it'll be a decrease in the need for parking. The fitness will be, the fitness or other commercial building, it's smaller. One of the buildings there was 17,800 square feet. They were, guest made something about 11,000 square feet, so it's comparable. And it's a lesson, these are both less intense uses. So I don't see a, an increase in parking demand for this.
I've asked a lot of questions. Donna or anybody else have more questions?
Yeah, what is the use that, if I'm looking at the self-storage CrossFit site plan that's here in the Dropbox? As I'm looking at the plan as it's posted, what is the use that's to the right of the proposed fitness facility that's kind of over that shared, that driveway to the right?
So you have two buildings back there, you have the Chubb, you're talking about that's off-site there? If it would be on the map, the lower right-hand corner?
Correct, in that kind of awkward sort of triangly area.
So if you were to go to the bottom of the map of the, towards the lower right-hand corner, that's going back towards the Chubb Insurance building and also there's another building there was the former headquarters of Simsbury Bank. So that's the two buildings that, that use that driveway, which, both of which have significant areas, significant portions of the building, which are not currently being occupied. So even, even with the vacancies, these two uses will not generate a substantial traffic that would interfere with the operation of those, those two facilities.
Just as a point, let me mention too that that access road off Route 10 that goes back to Chubb is also the access road to the state park that's down there. I forget what the name of that is, but there's a substantial state park, you know.
That's the Nodbrook Wildlife.
Right, and so, yeah, if you like dogs especially, it's a great spot.
They shoot down there.
Yeah, I used to go fishing there a lot, but the shooting's out of hand or it wasn't my time. Let me just offer this, somehow I wasn't aware, I looked at that Dropbox several times, including as late as five o'clock today. I don't remember seeing this plan there, but, so just from memory, I, I recall, I, I only have one computer screen and I'm reluctant to switch it to the Dropbox because my meeting might go away. And besides, I wouldn't see all the smiling face, but in the northwest corner of the, you know, which is the corner of the driveway and Route 10, somewhere out in that general area, I have this recollection that the master plan called for a fairly substantial building that would accommodate. I don't know if that is still existing on the master plan you all are looking at, but I'm curious as to whether that building has some impact as a result of the concepts and the locations being discussed now. Or maybe it's my imagination and no large scale. Well, I call it medium scale, but there was a large opportunity for.
Mike just said what the, it's going to shrink somewhat, right? The size of the building.
That's correct, that's correct. Because that, Bruce, that box that you're thinking about, it kind of overhangs where the, this fitness and the, the self, self-storage is located. So that box would be going away and kind of pushed horizontally through the site. You wouldn't have that very large massive building that was shown on the master plan.
But is there a space for it if it was proposed to move it to the south somehow on, on, you know, the land that Mr. Greenberg controls there? Between.
Well, he's got.
driveway and, and the existing marijuana building.
So, so over there, there was, there was. So, so over there, there was, there was one, there's another, there's another building that was, that was shown on the, the master plan? I, if, if they were to move that larger building, that, that's kind of where this would be located, to another spot, I would say at that point, we're talking about a, a substantial change to the, to the pad, and it would come back to this, to this commission. Because you're, you're moving, you know, a more larger, intense building closer to the road, which is not one thing that the, that even during this, this approval process of the pad, one thing that, that resonated out of the, the discussion was, push all the big stuff to the back, shield it. So you didn't see it. And that's, that's what they're doing with this development, and it's not a very dense development. And like I said, it, it just, it won't, that, that large building won't work with what, what's, how they're laying, how this site will be laid out. They would have to, you'd be increasing the total area of commercial space out there, beyond what was previously approved.
So if, if our sort of response is, it doesn't seem like the concepts in, in play at this time would require an amendment to the, to the master plan, then is it safe to assume that the next time there's a proposal for development on that prop, it's going to be sufficiently different, that there would have to be a new master plan at that time?
That's correct.
Or an amendment to the master plan, okay.
Amendment to the master plan.
Yeah.
Well, Mike, there wouldn't be another building on lot in parcel two, would there? Right? Because we got that berm, and so are we saying that nothing will be built between the berm and Route 10?
Right.
You, you know, well, I, I, I don't want to say never, because down the road, they could change it and come in with something. But it would be, it would, it would, they, they have one other building that would be the upper left-hand corner of the, of this, of the proposed drawing. So it would be, it's like a small L-shaped building that's shown there. But then the area that's, that's like the upper right-hand or corner of the, there would be directly in front of the, the fitness or dead center of the, the self-storage, that, if you wanted to prove something over there, then I'd say you're going a little above and beyond what's shown on the master plan. And in, I would, in, in my, in staff's opinion down the road, I'd say that that would trigger submittal of a revised addendum to the master plan, to illustrate a different scale development that's getting closer to Route 10. I just don't want to, I don't think we should, I don't think we should say that it, there will be, there will never be development out there, because, like I said, they have the, they could propose something out there and come in to amend the plan, to put something dense out there, or, you know, multiple buildings that look different, or the square footage does not reflect what was previously approved as a total.
Well, it's also possible, maybe that would be proposed in front of the apartments at the other end of that tract of land, where the apartments have been built and are fairly, I don't know if they're completely occupied, but they're well done. My, my, just sort of off the top of my head though, I've, I think we've all seen, you know, structures that are, are designed to accommodate self-storage that we wouldn't necessarily want to have in the southern gateway to Simsbury. And I would just hope if there's a proposal coming forward, that, you know, it reflects a concern of, of our, our town, that anything that goes in that southern gateway should be on the attractive and upscale side rather than the other end, as we have something in the way of self-storage in the north end of Simsbury that happens to be behind some other buildings. And you can't see it at all, so we don't comment on, or the, you know, the attractiveness or the lack of. So for Mr. Greenberg and others who might be involved in the future, even though I hear discussion of a berm and concern about screening from Route 10, I guess my thought would just be, you know, lean towards the upscale concepts in the design of a self-storage building or complex.
So by way, by way of clarification, Mr. Greenberg is not proposing to actually build the CrossFit building at this time, although he's seeking approval for it. And if this is approved, there's nothing that will require him to build the CrossFit thing. And there's nothing to say that they, Mr. Greenberg could not seek to do further construction closer to Hot Meadow on the other side of the berm. Correct?
But right now, this is just a discussion, Melissa, this isn't-
Right.
-an application to build anything.
So I'm, I'm just having a, just by way of clarification, that is what could happen here, correct?
Well, I think Mike said that if anything went on the other side of the berm, it would be a, a change to the original concept, so that that would require-
If the total area that went to the, to the other side, because remember, there was another building that's, that's, that's shown on the master plan closer to Route 10. But anything, let's say, let's say from the middle of the page down to the right-hand side, addition to, let's, let's say it's a perfect world, commission says, this is fine, come in with your site plan. He comes in, gets the site plan approval for the self-storage, comes in at a later date, gets the site plan approval for the, for the, for the fitness building or other building, then comes in, builds the other L-shaped building. So now he's built out based square footage than what was approved on the master plan, then says, I want to add an additional pad out front. The total area of square footage exceeds what was shown on the master plan, that's where I'd say the intensity has changed, because you added more stuff, then the master plan would have to be amended. Does that clarify maybe?
Uh huh. Thank you.
Yeah. I'm not sure, I don't want to see it as a change to the master plan. Because I, we've already seen down there by the apartments that the commercial out front did not get built. So we could possibly not see the proposed fitness facility not be built. So you end up with self-storage facilities, which would be visible coming north, or coming south on Route 10. When I envisioned this original property, I never thought we would have self-storage in it. It's not quite the quality of construction I was anticipating when we approved that master plan.
I, I didn't either, but I wasn't on the zoning commission at the time.
Well, we saw the plan, and it was, you know, it was going to be commercial and offices, and, and self-storage to me is more industrial than it is commercial.
Yeah.
It's, it's not really what I would see for that development. Even though you do have the, the, you know, next door, you have the marijuana plant there, but still, it's not where we wanted to go with this.
That was all industrial in the first design, first layout, wasn't it?
That's correct, that the underlying zone is industrial.
So, so it almost says, even with the pad, doesn't the underlying thing still enable construction according to it?
They can use the underlying zone for uses.
Pardon?
They, they, the pad allows for the use of underlying zones in addition to the master plan.
Well, the master plan overrides the, overrides that though, so if it's not-
That's right.
If it's not what we-
You don't get your choice.
Yeah.
It's not a choice, Mike, you, you have to, you know, comply with the, the PAD, or submit a new master plan. And see if that flies.
They, they, no, because that's how we, that's how we allowed Curaleaf. We allowed it by the, the, the underlying zone.
Well, I was the one dissenter on that, that vote, and, and that didn't, you know, affect my thinking at all.
Well, it was also a current building.
An existing structure, for which there was no new master plan. If I remember right, the center section of that sixty acres or whatever it is, there was no proposed master plan, just the north and south parcels or segments.
Can I, can I talk, am I allowed to talk at this meeting?
Sure.
Sure.
No, that's not the case, Bruce. The master plan had about fifty percent more square footage within that Curaleaf than is there now. So there was a decrease in the square footage by allowing Curaleaf to stay in the present building.
But I thought there was a, there was an assumption that, that there wasn't any proposed change to the building in the master plan.
No, the master plan had that building demolished.
Right.
Okay, and that's, that would be evident then in the document that's available that Mike has circulated. It shows that building demolished.
It was demolished in the master plan. The original master plan.
Well, the one that's been circulated today to our members, I'm just trying to be clear here, I, I hear what you're saying. And I'm sure, you know, there's merit to your, your point, but it's not my remembrance. And I just want to make sure that my colleagues who have looked at the master plan today are seeing the same thing, that that Curaleaf building's not there. You're looking at the master plan. Is that right, Mike, or not?
Well, I, I guess the, the real question is, is, is the development of the, the self-storage and the other building, do you feel it's consistent with the master plan? That's really the, the, the point of discussion. Because they, they, the, the applicant, you know, would like to know, they have someone on, interested in developing a portion of this lot, and kind of need an answer. And what we discussed was, that's why they, they submitted this concept plan. I, I did not want them to go any further down the road without at least having this conversation with the commission. And Mark, I don't mean to speak for you on that.
No, I mean, you're absolutely right. And I thought that in the development of this site plan, by proposing the berm, and by proposing, frankly, to hide the, the self-storage, I was dealing with some of your concerns, which by the way, were some of my concerns at the same time. This development is going slow for a variety of reasons. Number one, the economy, and this COVID nineteen has not helped that, of course, probably pushed things back three, four years. But also, I don't want to do something that I'm not going to be proud of. So I frankly chose the back of that rural land with a berm, with an entrance by way of Tower Business Park, in order to hide it as best, to the best of my ability. And I believe in the lease that we're thinking about drawing up, I have rights to say no. Because if it looks like a typical self-storage, I'm probably going to say, no, this is Simsbury, we have to have it upscale, an upscale self-storage behind the berm. That was the concept. So when I look at this property, I look at this land that the self-storage and the CrossFit might go on as the least valuable of the remaining land. One of the reasons why we haven't developed anything in front of Garden Apartments is that nobody's approached me with a use that I feel is consistent for the area. And for that parcel, I think that a medical facility would be perfect for the front of that, those apartments. And I just haven't gotten the right offer. And I could frankly wait for a long time before we do get the right offer, and I, I don't mind that.
Mike, when we're talking about doing a review of the master plan, that means a public hearing and a lot of, I don't know what input. But on the other hand, if you're doing, they've got to come back in with a site plan, it's only a matter of, of scale, I guess, in terms of the time it takes to get it done, isn't it?
That's correct.
I mean, I, I think if they have to come back in bringing this, the berm and all of the drawings, then we have the option to say no at that point. And so I don't see that it's so different. And I don't think that going through the whole process of, of a public hearing of the thing is necessary, my, my feeling.
Although, it was only a few months ago that we had some people in front of us who were talking about building a hotel down, you know, across from Mitchell Dodge there on that corner. And there was some sympathy, that some, some strength in the argument that they should do a new master plan, because it's a larger hotel than the thing that was described as a hotel in the master plan that was approved. And so now, you know, you have something quite different than what's in the master plan in my mind. I'm not convinced that it goes all the way to where it should be, you know, another master, you know, a, a master plan amendment, but, you know, it's a lot more change than the size of the hotel was to go with.
I thought we told them to go ahead with that.
We did, but that was after some discussion and-
Okay, but there's discussion here, yes, we could require them to do a whole master plan, but I-
A master plan amendment doesn't require the whole master plan, it just requires an amendment presenting the areas of change. Right, Mike?
Well, no, I thought you gotta, you gotta open the whole thing up.
Right, but there's no obligation, the whole thing opens up for conversation, but the only obligation is to present the changes that the applicant wants, wants to make.
No, I think when you open it up, then you open the whole thing up, and I'm, I'm pulling out my regs right now to confirm.
Okay.
I mean, the difference is with or without a public hearing, isn't it?
Well, I mean, if you look at the two things, you find it consistent with the, the master plan, no public hearing, site plan approval. Opening up the, the, the master plan triggers a public hearing process, a referral process to the planning commission, and I believe the conservation is involved in this.
Go ahead, Kevin.
So you said that not doing, so we say it's within the master plan, then there's no site plan approval?
No, no, there is a site plan approval.
It's not what-
No, they'd be back, Mike, no, they'd be back for site plan approval. If you're, if, if you give them a, you give them a thumbs up tonight and say, yeah, it's, it's consistent, they're going to proceed with preparing a site plan application. That's what, that's what tonight's trigger for them is. And they need, they need an answer, they need an answer on whether it's going to be an administrative approval, meaning site plan, not administrative, Mike Glidden, because like I said, there, it's time-sensitive for them. They have someone who's interested in one, one phase of the project.
All right, that's what I was worried about, is becomes administrative approval by staff instead of by us, because we, we certainly need to see this storage-
Yes. And, and I think you're, some of the comments that you made, it gives, gives the team some great direction on, you know, what's, that preliminary plan that's presented is not what's going to fly. They know what they need to look at, you know, building design, how it's, you know, they don't want to, you know, the proper means to visually mitigate any impact of it. And the fact that, you know, we don't, kind of what people are saying, they don't want to see the traditional self-storage kind of industrial design.
I think people, people would like to see the berm and in front of that a farm. I'm laughing, but that's what people really would like to see. If you put that on there, they'd be happy.
It's true.
So you want to grow corn?
Corn would be good.
No, but we would see it if there was, if it were a site plan approval, we would see all the details. And have to approve it. So what do you guys think, your commission? Donna?
I mean, we, we, we would see it, but would we like it? I mean, do, do you want to let them get that far? It's a self-serve, it's just lots of little units sitting there, and what the, the original site plan had was, you know, more substantial buildings.
But I've seen site, I've seen self-serve, self-storage places that are five and six-story blocks.
Right. And that would be, that would be a different thing. I don't think that's necessarily self-storage as much as storage, but, yeah, that would be a different thing. The building could look completely different and be closer to the original idea. That's my thought.
Folks, just to speak again about something that you mentioned earlier, I didn't chime in at the time. The thirty thousand square foot building cannot be built because of this. So that will be impossible. But we do believe, or I believe- But we do believe, or I believe, that there will be some building in the front or closer to the front, perhaps 10,000 to 15,000 square feet, will have, which will have the effect of blocking the berm and blocking the fitness and blocking the, perhaps the self-storage. So I don't expect that the front of these properties will be remaining vacant for the next 15 years. There will be some blocking from this further development.
Okay, what are our comments? Do we want to see a full site plan or want to see a full master plan revision or not?
Well, I'd be okay as long as we see a site plan. Because even on this way as proposed here, I would propose swapping the proposed fitness facility and the parking lot and put the parking lot closer to the storage and the building closer to Executive Road or whatever it's called there. So that, you know, it maintains that office look along that road and the parking lot alongside the the storage facility.
Man, you got any comments? Donna, Ann, anybody?
Yeah. Ann had something to say, I could tell. Well, my thought is just this, that I don't feel the compelling need for a site plan, a, you know, a completely, you know, a major relook at the whole master plan. But I do, I don't want to be mistaken here that, you know, I'm not automatically suggesting that you could take with you tonight that I'm going to support having those uses in that property. You know, there's a combination of factors, including what it looks like, the way it lays out the final design. So I would say that I'm not opposed to it, but I'm not. I mean, you gotta, I gotta see some sort of plan that I feel is compelling and suits the space in the town.
Okay, I think you're saying what most of us are saying, which is we're very wary of what it might be, but we don't think it's got to be master plan revision, that we will be very critical of the site plan itself and the details of it. Anybody disagree with that? We're all silent.
Although, let me just offer a reminder that we have, we occasionally talk about the need to look, relook at our PAD regulation and maybe tune it up a little in the future because we've had some issues that we're more acquainted with now, that we've had it for, well, you know, X number of years, 10 years now, but
Yep.
This is, maybe we could add some clarity to when do you need a revision or amendment to the master plan and when do you, so that it's
Right.
A little more straightforward for people like Mark Greenberg before they come into the chat.
Sitting here trying to scratch our heads about things that are kind of.
My recollection is that it was this property that started the pad. It was, the pad was made for this property, actually, after the Conover thing failed.
Yeah.
Oh, well.
But at least, at least you should know, as long as I'm owning the property, and that's going to be probably a very long time. And by the way, these are leases of land, but I have full rights to approve anything that's built. I will not allow anything that's to be built that I don't think is going to be a substantial asset to the town of Simmsbury.
We appreciate that. Do you have enough information tonight from our discussion to proceed or not?
Well, I feel like it's going to be a 50/50 shot. I have, I have a good lukewarm feeling from that, from this. What do you think, Rich?
A good lukewarm feeling, that's.
Yeah.
I'll tell you, before we agreed to pursue the self-storage, I went to two seminars up in, outside of Boston and paid attention to what's the desire, the need of a community and how do they look and how do they feel today? And as I toured through New England, I see many different looks to the self-storage industry. And when I did the back of the envelope formula that I learned from the seminars, we're deeply underserved in the Farmington Valley right now. It's, you know, I know that it's not always the most desirable type of development to occur, but it is a necessary piece that we all use and especially with the slew of apartments that have been built and are still being proposed to be built in the, in the valley.
Right.
The other consideration that I have frankly is that this is going to be a very, very modest traffic generator, very modest. So the discussion about traffic, I think, should be very muted because there's nothing better than self-storage for traffic.
And then the only reservation we have on the health building, the fitness facility, health would be that COVID-19, hopefully, everybody comes back strong and we don't lose as many people as we could. And, you know, that's an industry, we don't, we have no idea how that's going to be ramped up again and that could be a year before they get that built up again to the types of memberships that, that they had previously.
Okay, Mike, I think we're exhausted. People, our visitors themselves.
I'm exhausted by boredom for the last six weeks. I, I thank you for your time and attention on this informal meeting, I do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mike, do we have anything else on the agenda?
I just had one point of correspondence that we were going to discuss. And that was temporary, temporary outdoor dining. So with the governor entertaining a possible lifting of restrictions by May 20th, there's been talk that if the restrictions are lifted, that restaurants will be allowed to have in-person dining, however, it'd be limited to only outdoor dining spaces. I met, I had a few conversations this morning with Sarah Nielsen, the executive director of Sims, Simsbury Main Street Partnership. And we feel that, you know, in order to provide the best economic climate for our restaurants, that a flexible approach needs to be taken towards temporary outdoor dining. Really, what we're looking at is the temporary or outdoor dining could allow people, certain restaurants that have been extremely limited in nature and service and scale right now, that really, if you really think of it, they've been, it'll be two months since they've actually had people in their building, because it was right around St. Patrick's Day is when all the orders were issued to shut down the state. What we wanted, what I wanted to discuss with the commission is get the authorization to approve temporary outdoor dining areas via zoning permit with consultation with the fire marshal and building official to make life safety and the Farmington Valley Health District, make sure there's no health-related issues. We wanted to handle this by an administrative zoning permit because time is of the essence with these restaurants. These are very sensitive requests that they want to hit the ground running, be set up should the order be lifted from May 20th. And what I discussed was, in my memo, was giving, because these are temporary in nature, basically, once we go back to business, these, however they set up their outdoor, temporary outdoor dining areas would go away. And let's say like in 90 days, we go back to, we go back to normal and indoor dining areas are allowed to be opened by the governor, these temporary permits would go away. If for some reason we're 90 days out and life is not back to normal, then staff will be prepared to discuss options or either extensions or other ways to accommodate some of these businesses down the road. One of the things I was going to commit to is if you're okay with us signing off on these temporary outdoor dining permits, is that we're going to provide copies of where we're giving approvals, what approvals are we granting, scale, et cetera, I think I outlined in my memo, so that the commission is left, is totally informed of the situation. Because we're looking at a situation now where, you know, without, if these, if these businesses are left without having the ability to have these temporary outdoor dining areas, we're going to see a greater pinch on these businesses and, you know, instead of dealing with maybe one out of seven businesses closing, you could have, you know, that number from one turn into three. We're just trying to proactively come up with an economic solution that works for the businesses, but at the same time has a structure to it.
Everybody read the memo?
Yes.
You all get it?
Yeah.
Anybody have any comments about it?
Yeah, I was doing a lot of work on this issue today, exact, in fact, before I even knew that Mike was looking into it. Obviously, the first, the first priority is keeping everybody safe and the second priority is getting a viable economic model for our restaurants to be operating under. And and I guess, you know, my question is, to what extent can we assist our restaurants that don't even have an outdoor permit from the liquor department yet or something like that? To what extent can we provide a streamlined process for that to happen? So it's not just that we're giving temporary permits for the expansion of uses that are there right now outdoors, but what about our restaurants that don't even have that outdoor, that outdoor capacity yet? You know, I started to speak earlier today about the expansion into parking lot spaces and my concern, and I just, and I'm sure you've looked at all this already, so I may be playing catch-up a little bit, but my concern would be that when we're giving these permits, that we as a commissioner are doing everything we need to make, do to make sure that the permits aren't in violation of some of our existing regs. So say for instance, if we're going to encourage restaurants to expand and they can use their parking lots to do that, well, right now, we have 3.3 spaces required for every table or what have you in restaurants. So is there anything we as a commission need to do in order to give our stamp of approval to having permits granted over those regs that otherwise would be contradicted by these permits?
So one of the keys is that these will be for temporary uses? I think, I think that's one thing that's big. Bruce, you want to, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
I still think that, I mean, I would assume that calculations would be made. If you're going to use parking areas for temporary dining, then you have a limited amount of space or a limited amount of tables and then that we, that then there would be sufficient parking for that number of tables such that we're still not going to get into a situation where we have too many people showing up and no place to park with people sitting out in the parking lot. And so I think there's a balance there that I would assume that the calculations would be made in granting these temporary spaces, right?
I think it would almost be, I think it would almost be the opposite though, because if we're going to have these temporary spaces and they're going to have to be, you know, the social distancing six feet away from one another, they're going to need more space to be economically viable and they may not be able to maintain the number of parking spaces that would be otherwise required under our regs. So how can we support that?
Well, you're going to have issues then with cars, I mean, and no parking.
We are, we are.
Actually, if I could jump in for a moment, I've been talking to a number of property owners, business owners and restaurateurs every week. I'm involved heavily with them. And on the restaurants, they're being told right now 10-foot radius from tables. And their capacities would drop significantly. And when you have that capacity drop, you're not going to have as many people showing up to be at that particular restaurant, so you won't have as many cars there. And they just want to survive and some of them will give me, you know, types of numbers that they would have to do just to break even. And their feeling is, they're expressing to me at least, is that if we don't make a profit, we're going to live with that, but we have to get our people working again. And even with the great distance of what would be put out there with them. But a 10-foot radius, I mean, you take a place like, like say Pop Over Cafe, you probably could fit three teams in there if they could only stay inside. If they can spill outside a little bit, they could pick up a few more. So that's.
Can I ask you to stop, please?
Sorry.
The question is, this is a temporary thing, I think Mike and the fire chief and town officials have been working hard to try to do something that makes it possible on a temporary basis for these guys to open and spill out into the parking areas and whatever. The governor has already said they can serve alcohol outside. And so I think we're just accommodating that situation. And I think our job here should be to approve a motion that lets Mike give these permits and, and let's see what, what happens after, after 90 days. We have, we're not, we'll learn from this, but I think we need to accommodate our, our people who've been shut down for six and eight weeks now. And it's really, I mean, it's terrible when you think about it.
Could it be 90 days or while the governor's executive order is in place?
Well, he's got something like 26 executive orders right now, so you know, you can have, which ones are you talking about?
Well, the one that, that doesn't allow indoor dining.
And he's generating a new one almost every day, but.
So Kevin, you're saying 90 days or less if the order changes to an earlier date?
Or, yeah, or longer if it's four months instead of three months.
Yeah. But I think 90 days gives them, gives them the ability to do something and us time to figure out what we've done.
So again, is the proposal to permit the permits to be granted over the existing regs and to make that permit a temporary, you know, permitted use for all of these? Is that how we would word that? How do we get around this? Not if, I don't mean get around this, but how do we make sure that what we're doing both helps the restaurants, brings them economic relief, gets everybody back to work and make sure that they're not, it's not something that can be challenged later on?
Anything?
So our.
Successfully.
Our administrative permits will be specific to giving a 90-day approval only. The permit will be no longer valid after 90 days and we will, we will take enforcement action should the world change and we're back to normal on day 91, 92. And they fail to take up their temporary space.
And that is sufficient to.
We'd have teeth, because let's say, let's say they were taking parking spaces to put up three tables, just for argument's sake. Well, we're day 92, we're back to life is normal, you can go inside, now you're occupying parking spaces, your site no longer complies with the regs. So they would, we'd have teeth in our approach to say, you're in violation of whatever your approvals are and the regulations, so therefore remove the tables now or we issue a cease and desist and issue fines. But I don't, I don't want to think like that because I don't, you know, I don't want to go down that, that road. I think kind of what Rich sort of indicated, and just for the record, I mean, Rich is the current president of Main Street Partnership. So yeah, this is, this is the lifeline we're throwing out to the businesses to say, the option is there and we're going to try to work with you at, at least for 90 days or, you know, however long, as Kevin sort of indicated, till the governor changes his executive order to allow in-person indoor dining.
So just being overly optimistic, if he were to allow that in 60 days, then what do we do for those other 30 days when they can have a full restaurant and they have outdoor?
Well, Don, I'm curious, because I was, I'm sorry, I was just thinking, because even if they can, even if they can be inside, they're not going to be inside.
they're not going to be inside like whole, they're not going to be, you know, they're not going to have as many. So are we going to allow them to still have outdoor dining in conjunction with the limited indoor?
Yes.
Right, to allow the makeup, right. Yeah, that's just my question, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But just a point of clarification, that Dave, the governor's order doesn't, it doesn't provide an opportunity for pop-overs to start selling beer if you're sitting on the sidewalk. Then they don't have a liquor license.
Well, they'll serve outside, they, they can't do that when you have that license to sell liquor.
So if you have a liquor license for the indoor license category and not indoor and outdoor, under the governor's order that you're referring to, they can sell to the people sitting at the tables outside that are under this temporary permit.
That's my understanding.
Okay.
I'm not clear on that, but that's, I said, I'm not clear about whether that is the case or whether they'd have to take that step to have that patio extended use permit we were talking about earlier tonight, to have that expedited. But that's a conversation for another meeting.
Yeah, because you're allowed.
Our intent could be to allow compliance with whatever the governor's, you know, direction is on the liquor, you know, if he's going to direct the Liquor Control Commission to do something different in the way they regulate liquor usage and distribution and sales, then we go with the flow, but.
You know, to be clear, I'm really strongly in favor of doing whatever we need to do in order to get people back to work, get people out of their houses in a safe way. And we do have plenty of parking in downtown Simsbury. It might not be right next to your restaurant that you're going to, but there are places to park. And people can, can utilize that in the nicer summer months anyhow. I just want to make sure that what we are doing gives Mike the authority that he needs to issue these permits in a way that doesn't contradict our existing regs. And, and I'm, what I think, what I think I'm hearing is that you can do that on a temporary basis, right? A temporary permit doesn't violate our regs?
All right, why don't we, why don't we, if we can, put a motion together so we don't go forever?
Well, and my final point is the 90-day start on the day you sign the permit, Mike, or on the day they get their modifications in place to actually do business outside the existing building?
Be the day that I sign the permit.
And your vision is they would just leave the furniture out there overnight, seven days a week, right?
Or we could say, you know, we can, we could talk about, that's something, we could talk to the individual businesses depending on the layout, the physical layout as it relates to the site, where they want to put their stuff. Because that's going to, with the other two code officials being involved in this conversation, Henry Miga, the building official, and Kevin Kowalski are going to dictate that, too. So Kowalski is going to say, I don't want to see this setup still there at night while no one's there because I need access to the building after hours, et cetera. Let's, I'm just throwing it out there as an idea. So, I mean, I'm going to defer to them, those two, the, the plan, right now, the way, the way things are in motion is if, if the commission is comfortable with, with staff handling these temporary administrative approvals, that we're going to now sit together as, as the three primary code officials and come up with, this is going to be the how-to and how we're going to handle it based on the request for each people and get this out of the businesses, hopefully, within the next couple, couple of days, if not by the end of the week, so that we're able, we're able to accommodate some of their requests. And then as they come in, let's just say that they file their, they file an application prior to, and I'm just going to go with May 20th as the magic date. Let's say they file something next month, in two weeks, on Monday, the 18th. I wouldn't start the clock, although they filed it on the 18th, until the 20th comes around where the governor said it's okay to do the outdoor service now onsite.
All right, I do actually have one more question, real quick. And I know I'm not a voter, so I just want to go on record tonight, but I just want to go on record and say, I fully support you guys working together to do whatever you can to help the restaurants, without a doubt. Do they have to pay for that permit?
It will be a $25 fee.
Can we waive it? It's not my thing.
No.
Can we waive it? I guess that's probably not up to us, but.
The Board of Selectmen.
The Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, okay.
Can we have a, we have a motion to approve Mike Clinton's memo of May 4th that he distributed to us, authorizing him to proceed?
I'll make a motion then. I move that we authorize areas of expanded outdoor dining by administrative zoning permit and administrative approval is subject to.
Framework in Mike's memo of May 4th.
In accordance with his memo of May 4th. Mike, Kevin froze, I don't know.
Kevin's frozen over here.
So who's made that motion now?
Oh, I thought he wasn't talking.
I thought he was thinking for a minute, but.
Something happened.
Now I get it.
Whatever word he said.
Well, he can, it says administrative permits would be reviewed and approved by, so, by planning, the building official, the fire marshal, and the health district.
Planning staff isn't the planning commission, though. It's, it's Mike.
Right, correct.
Right.
All right, it will be Mike. Yeah, and I, and I will be the primary staff member from the planning department handling these requests and working directly with, with you as the commission and the businesses.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Anne seconded it?
Yes.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, six, nothing, so go, Mike.
Yeah, go, Mike, and the same to Henry Miga and Kevin Kowalski. Good luck. I, I'm sure there'll be, it's really going to have to be a case by case.
Yeah, it'll be good to see, though.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Give them a listen.
All right, guys, thank you very much.
Okay.
Night, Al.
Thank you.